To the city council meeting for the city of Hudson for Monday, May 6th. Please call this meeting to order and please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Rich.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, T Winkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Benslow.
Here.
This time we ask anyone in the audience that if they'd like to address the council on any issue that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do that. So if there's someone here that would like to address the council on any issue not on the agenda, now is the time. Anyone here? No? Okay. All right, let's move on. Consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2013. To approve renewal of the conditional use permit to The Home Depot for seasonal outdoor sales garden center at 2330 Crestview Drive with the conditions that it be limited from April 1st to July 15th, allow up to eight feet of chain link fence and a 20-foot by 40-foot greenhouse, and the total area is limited to 64 feet by 120 feet, 7,680 square feet. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $285,746.91. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of 14 regular operators licenses for the period, May 7th, 2013 to June 30th, 2015, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that is owed to the city. And to approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used July 3rd through 6th, 2013, at the Hudson Booster Days event in Lakefront Park. Additional operator license information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of four fireworks paraphernalia sales permits for the sale dates of June 15th, 2013 to July 7th, 2013 inclusive, contingent on attending a mandatory informational meeting to the following stores located in Hudson: Menards, Fleet Farm, Target, and Walmart. To approve change order number two in the amount of $7,392.50 for chain link fence and spruce trees for the Lake Malibu Storm Sewer Fallout Number Two Improvements Project as submitted. To approve the fourth agreement for professional services work order for field investigation, design work, and construction administration for the 2013 street improvements project at the estimated fee of $140,500 as submitted. To approve a special event permit for Hudson Boosters Incorporated for the 2013 Booster Days event in Lakefront Park. And to approve the designation as a community event and allow a reduction in the required insurance coverage to $1 million, and that disability parking and signage be provided with signage picked up at the completion of the event. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk, the semi-annual report of the community development director, and the April 23rd, 2013 minutes of the community access board, and the April 24th, 2013 minutes of the St. Croix EMS commission. That is all.
Move for approval. Is there a second? Second? Roll call vote, please.
Yakub?
Yes.
Benslow?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
T Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First order of business is the roundabout on 405 Stage Line Road, Hudson Hospital and Health Partners. Mr. Darnold.
Good evening. When the medical office building addition for Hudson Hospital Clinics and Health Partners was initially approved by the common council, the common council asked that when the intersection design was completed, please bring it back for presentation. Initially, the intersection design was for a T-intersection, which would not have been traffic without traffic lights. We looked at the safety considerations of that, efforts to possibly trying to slow the traffic on Stage Line Road is currently at 35 miles per hour. And the consensus was between staff and the developer, the Hudson Hospital Health Partners, that a roundabout would be the best option for consideration to implement. The, it's a one-lane roundabout, it's been designed for truck traffic. A one-lane roundabout can hold, handle capacity up to 25,000 cars a day. Traffic there is probably about 12 or 13 perhaps, so there's quite a bit of capacity left. Our biggest concern was left turns coming out of the hospital clinic facility. Basically, due to some age of drivers, that turn wasn't protected as well as what we'd like to see, and putting in stoplights or stop signs also would, stop signs maybe are try, put those in then maybe have to go to stoplights later. It seemed like the implementation of the roundabout initially was the best option. So it's, it's a simple, one-lane roundabout at the entrance.
I move for approval.
Is there a second? A second. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Has there been a public hearing on this or addressed any of the public's opinion?
No.
We had it at planning. It was.
It was at planning commission, yeah.
I can state, living up there, that I've received many complaints from area, District two area residents of the current situation, and they want to see a change. And I agree with Denny that the best possible solution, and everyone knows how I feel about roundabouts, but it is a roundabout. So that's why I made the motion to approve. I don't think there's a better solution. And I don't think anyone up in that area wants to see another stoplight, so.
Well, where the new entry was moved to, you know, it's far enough east around that corner, it's tough to.
You can't see. It's very blind. And now that it's down the one lane, people aren't used to it, and there's near rear-end collisions, not, there haven't been, but there's been near ones, so.
I would agree.
It's gonna be nice, I think, as a frequent user of that facility.
Well, I guess I'd ask my question again. There was no public information, public hearing or nothing at your planned meeting or anything?
No, there's been no notice of public, public information.
And I agree, I don't care for roundabouts, but as far as a safety issue, if this is the best we can do, then I will vote for it. But I just thought maybe a little public opinion.
Do you have other thoughts in mind or other recommendations?
No. You just said they don't want any more stoplights up there, and that seems to be cost prohibitive, but.
Well, it's, roundabouts save gas, time, and energy. There's no extra stoplights to run or.
Well, it's not staged on, it's just an event to stop there. It keeps the flow going.
Right, it keeps the flow going, and it's only active when you need it, so I mean, it's very efficient.
Any other comments or discussion or questions? Anybody have any questions for Denny? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, it was a no recommendation from the finance committee. It was carried forward to the full council, consider additional room tax funds or other contributions towards annual fireworks display. We received no comments from our other municipalities within our school district about contributing to that, so we're back. Mr. Morsette, I asked that we come for the whole council.
Yeah, I originally asked that we add maybe four grand more from room tax dollar to enhance the fireworks show for the Booster Days, which draws in multiple people and has always been good for businesses downtown. And I thought, I've always heard we could use better fireworks, so we've got some money there, and I suggested four grand. If that's too high, I'd certainly.
No other municipality offered to supplement some of the costs?
What's that?
No other municipality offered to supplement some of the costs?
No. Okay. Comments, thoughts, questions?
I think it's a good idea. I, I think it's almost there, but not quite. And if you go to Stillwater, wow, they put on a heck of a show, so. And the nice thing is they staggered out so that Hudson's always the day before Stillwater in proximity. It's a good draw by land and water.
Is there a particular amount you would be comfortable?
I don't know what I get for $4,000. Is that a lot or a little, or, well, how much do we spend on an hour?
Depends on the size of the shelves.
10. 10, okay.
We just executed a contract, but it could be amended.
Are we trying to amend it? I guess whether or not it's too late to amend it.
Oh, I don't, I mean, I'm sure if we contacted them, said we'd like to spend more money.
If we wanted to go the other way, maybe.
Right, we wouldn't be able to.
I mean, it is our Hudson celebration, it has been for years, and I just think the.
Just so you're aware, though, that if you do it, it's gonna have to, not necessarily have to be every year, but.
How long is the contract for?
It's a one-year contract, but what I'm saying is that you put $10,000 in, now if you increase it to 12, and then pull it back to 10, just so you're aware of that, that you'd probably have to continue it at whatever level.
Weren't we at one point able to match, get like a match, like we put in so much and the company supplemented some of it? I thought that happened.
We do bid it out every year, so it is competitive bid, and we always get four or five people that.
I think they did that for the, another event that we had downtown. They had Henderson, might have been the Spirit of St. Croix.
Maybe.
Through the chamber.
Hot Air Fair has fireworks.
Yep.
And if we don't put it into fireworks, we will put it into other uses such as the garbage cans downtown or.
Yeah.
The old people's home or something like that it can go to.
You know, it's what, it's a 20-minute show. Do we think people are coming because we're only spending $10,000? Do we think more people will come if we spend more?
Yes.
I agree with Lori, actually.
I, I've never heard anybody say that it's a bad show.
Yeah. I don't think it's a bad show. I think that is improved since I first moved to Hudson, it's definitely greatly improved.
Well, and now that they're competitively bidding it every year, that has, has made a difference into the, because there's four or five people competing and they keep trying to do each other.
You know, as a five-year-old, I don't, 10 more explosions aren't gonna do anything for me, so I don't know, I'm just.
I haven't been downtown for the 4th of July fireworks for maybe a couple of years, but do we really have room for more people? The last time I was there, it was so crowded that you could hardly park anywhere. I mean, they were walking for blocks to try to get downtown or sitting way far away from them. I don't know if, I don't know if we can handle more people.
I don't know if we can predict that it would draw more people. It's that, it's that, it's that, how do you know how many more people it's drawing? I think we draw, though, as many people as are willing to come out to the fireworks that night. You go for your families, so if your family's available, when you go down, you go down, whether it's 100 or 300, so.
All right. Let it go.
I mean, we could pursue it over the next year, see if there's any interest. I mean, we kind of sprung this on the other municipalities, but we could ask them again, say would you be willing to next year?
Put it in their budget for next year?
So they can put it in their budget, but I think if we're looking for somewhere to spend $5,000, the fireworks would not be on the top of my list of priorities.
Anybody else? Is there a motion on the floor? I don't think there is a motion yet.
No, it's pretty obvious. You can let it go.
Okay. All right. I guess we're, we'll move on then. Update report from Foth Engineering regarding submittal of STP grant, application for Vine Street project. Karen.
Okay, at the March 25th council meeting, I brought in how much the fees would be for us to submit an application to go for grant funding on the Vine Street project from First Street to Ninth Street. And at that time, you directed me to go back and figure out what the additional fees would be to meet the STP funding with the Trans 75. And this report, I'll just go over it very briefly. On page two, on table two, I just want you to see the existing street width, and it ranges anywhere from approximately 36, 37 feet wide to 31 feet wide. On the feasibility street width, we increased that to back a curve approximately 36 feet. And if we went for the WISDOT funding and we met the requirements with the bike lanes, we're up to approximately 42 feet wide, back-to-back. And we do have the room to do that in the existing boulevard, that's where we'd get the area from. And we would be taking out trees to get that width. The next page, on page three, you can see a typical section where we show the two bike lanes, the two through lanes at 11 feet wide. We would maintain parking on one side of the street. We still would have approximately a six-and-a-half-foot boulevard and our five-foot sidewalk. The cost then to meet the requirements for the funding would be approximately additional $300,000 beyond what was estimated in the feasibility study. And the final page is a breakdown on the project funding structure and how that would look. If we did get the grant, WISDOT could pay up to 80% of this grant, which would be approximately 2.1 million. The city would be responsible for approximately 1 million for a total of 3.1. If we didn't do that and went with the feasibility study, that estimated construction cost is approximately 2.8 million.
80% is the max we can get, or?
That's the max. And typically, they go anywhere from 50% to 80%.
Is this the same grant we did for Wisconsin Street?
Yes, it is.
So the chances of us getting the max are slim?
It all depends, yeah. I mean, there is possibly that you could go back on the bottom of the queue and then work up, but.
Isn't one of the thing, criteria is the number of traffic or number of cars on that street?
Yeah.
And this is a high-volume street.
We do have to submit the traffic counts in the part of the grant application does ask for the traffic counts on the roadway.
It's just usually with grant work, it's, if you got it once, we're gonna look to the city who didn't get it yet.
That, that could possibly, yeah, I would, I could say that more than likely you do good put-down at the bottom of the queue, but we don't know how many people are submitting either.
Yeah, correct.
But they could give us 50%, not 80%, they will deny it, 80% if they can give us 50%.
That's true, too.
And then we have that time to determine if you wanna.
If you wanna go forward with it. And there is money left in the budget for us to continue with the grant application. It is due at the end of June, and we would like to get it in before that time, just in case something is submitted incorrectly, it gives us time to get the right information in.
We allocated $4,400, and I think there's 1,500 or 1,600 available?
Uh, 2,500 left.
2,500, so. Still within budget of what we initially thought, and this is the criteria that we asked for, and what do you think? And if you think that we should continue, then we should continue on.
I'll make a motion to continue?
Sure.
I move to continue forward with the grant process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there questions? Any other questions on this particular project? Kurt, did you have a question?
I, I think you talked about it at finance, I don't remember exactly, and I know it's not an exact answer, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at?
Oh, this, this is for money allocated between, I believe it was 2014 to 2019, so I'd say the construction's probably looking 2017, 2018 if you, if you did receive it.
So the price will go up?
Possibly.
Possibly, yes.
Just making sure.
Now, it, is the grant, does that slow it down? Or would we be looking at the same with the feasibility?
No, that does slow it down slightly, 'cause there's a whole review process, once you get it designed, then it goes back to WISDOT for their review. So yes, it does, it does slow the, the project down.
I mean, by counting in years?
Yeah, you could add a year onto it for slowing a project down.
I think the size of the project is, is worth the risk to see if we can get it.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Time. Go ahead.
What's the timeframe on knowing if?
That's a good question. I'm gonna give you an answer, but I can verify that. I believe it's near the end of the year, sometime around December. You would find out. Yes.
And we could address if we were turned down, then we can take a look at it again for, within our own budget, if we wanted to go that route.
Yeah, we're only looking at being, if we were denied, we'd only be seven, six months or whatever, so.
Yep.
And so if we're denied, we, we've missed the, I mean, can we try again next year? Or is, as you mentioned, the 2014 to 2019?
I think it's every two years.
Okay.
You're submitting on it.
So assuming we could wait two years?
Try it again.
We could try it again, or we may just decide to go ahead on our own. Okay.
I know there's been a couple of times we kind of wished we would have just gone ahead and done Wisconsin Street, but I think we, Karen is right on it on this one, right?
Right.
We don't know exactly how long it takes, and we're becoming more experienced in this.
It takes a while.
It does, doesn't it?
Except it'll be a million dollars more if it's 2019.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I just ask about the years, because I mean, Vine Street, I mean, we all know.
Yep.
Well, Wisconsin Street originally was 2013, that was the original concept, and now it looks like it's 2015.
15, right.
So I mean, that's.
Right.
Before the grant.
And if the prices do go up during the design phase, you're doing an estimate, working with the WISDOT and the grant, and, you know, they'll say, okay, this is what it was estimated, now that we're in the actual design phase, here's the cost, and then they do look at.
They compensate that?
Providing more funding.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you're not 50%. I mean, that's, that'd be good for, get some state tax dollars back to Hudson, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Questions? I think we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Karen.
Yep.
Number nine is consider renewal of annual alcoholic beverage license. We have approval from finance, except for Hanson Brothers Golf Holdings was pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
And just to be clear, I mean, what finance approved, what, all these different licenses on the issue sheets?
Except for Hanson?
Except for Hanson.
So why not Hanson?
Yeah.
We're just gonna revisit whether or not they've been consistently open and using their license.
The main reason for not Hanson's is that I don't want to give up the right to enforce our policies.
Or.
According to observation by myself, I go by that street every day, I believe they were closed from November through April. They may have had a banquet event here or there during that period of time, but according to our policy, they're supposed to be on a continuous business basis.
So.
And two consecutive days does not constitute.
Sure.
A continuous business, so I don't want us to, to lose our right to uphold the policy.
So I have a two-part question. So if we approve this without Hanson's, when does it come back for us after we find out?
We've got three more meetings.
We do? Okay. And then my second question would be, if we continue to not give them a license, if someone wants to hold a banquet there, are we, are, are they able to bring alcohol to the premises?
They have their license through the end of June.
Oh, right, their license.
No, their license to serve, but if you want to serve as a, as an organization, are you able to bring?
I mean, it's very fact and circumstances, but generally, if it's open to the public.
Like the hockey, you know, member of the crusade.
You really have to look at what the situation is that's being proposed.
So basically, their convention center that they have is essentially gonna be non-existent if we do this?
It won't be licensed for alcohol beverages.
Okay.
So I assume we'll be hearing from them before?
Well, we thought we'd try to gather some facts and just, and then we, we absolutely would need to notify them that this is a concern and ask them to provide facts, and to not renew if they dispute it, then we have to go through a non-renewal proceeding. Statutory non-renewal proceeding, similar to what we did for another licensee a few years ago.
Rich, I totally understand your, your rationale behind this, but I am, I, my concern would be when you do have events there, how that affects events, I guess. Or if, if it will even be available for future events if they can't, you know, because then, then what do we have in Hudson for an event hall?
Well, then they should come and, and pack us out with all sorts of bookings that they have on the books.
Well, they're, they're planning based on the information they came with before the council just a few months ago, to divide that into three separate commercial lots, so they're not planning to continue that as an event center into the future. So they already have plans to eliminate it.
Right, but that won't be next year.
But, but, that, that's not a council problem? That's, that's not a council problem?
No, I get that.
The council problem is to enforce the policies.
I, I get that. I'm just concerned about the community problem we might have without having a convention area.
I think that's a business problem, and that's up for them to decide how they want to.
But at this point, we, we do not know whether or not they are not meeting our policy.
We don't.
We just are speculating that it's perhaps the case. Is that right?
We think we need to look into it.
Okay.
And if they're, if they're meeting the policy, fine. I think that's just fine. But if they're not, and we allow it to continue, then in the future, people will say, I don't need to be open on a continuous basis because you let the Hudson Golf Course close down and not use their liquor license. So now we're gonna get into a situation where people can close their businesses for certain periods of time, not use their liquor licenses, and we can't enforce it.
Can we look at the policy for like a convention center type concept?
Well, I mean, it's always a concern if you don't enforce, you know, a pres, what Rich is concerned about is a precedent where, hey, you let this one business basically close down if that's what they did.
If that's what they did.
We don't know.
Right.
And so why are you enforcing it against?
But this type of, this type of business is, is.
It's a golf course.
It's, well, no, not talking about the convention center part, it's a, it's a, by, it's, it's, you don't know if you're gonna have a, a meeting there or not, or an event there or not, it's kind of, take it as it goes, so maybe we, I mean, I don't know if it's something to look at, to maybe, when you have a business of this type where it's not to be open continuously, that we need to consider, like, maybe we have to consider looking at that.
Yeah, that would all have to be, I mean, you'd, if you wanted to look at your continuation of business ordinance, you can.
Specified, I mean, more like, you know.
Right, now it's not in there, so I think the, the topic was, should this license be renewed? The issue came up about continuation of business. We're going to look into it, gather facts, and see if it is an issue. And what the council wants to do with that continuation of business requirement in the future is really a different subject.
Okay. Any other questions? So what, was there a motion to approve? I don't know if we've had one.
Not yet.
Is there a motion to approve all but the Hanson Brothers Holding?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. And Randy, you've recused yourself?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have an application of North Country Gold and Silver Company for a pawn broker license at 1920 Crestview Drive. Nancy, do you want to talk about this? This is a, they came in and asked for a license to buy our pond, gold and silver, correct?
Right. So it's the first application that I know of that the city has received for having a pawnbroker business. And in this case, they, they're asking for a pawnbroker license because they feel that customers have been requesting that they can bring in gold and silver items just for short-term loans instead of selling it to them outright. And it is, they would need to provide a $500 bond with not fewer than two sureties. Their background checks have been completed and passed. There's a list of articles that could be included to be pawned if the license is approved just because of the way the ordinance reads, and so it would have to be approved so that all those articles could be pawned, not just the gold and silver that they're asking for. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
But they are then not required to accept them. They can do whatever they want.
Correct. Correct.
But we have to approve it as a-
Pawnbroker.
A kind of a broader-
Correct.
Type service.
That's our, according to our regulations and ordinances.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, update from IT Coordinator on costs of computers for council members. Mike?
At the last meeting, the council indicated an interest in finding out what the costs and issues would be with providing some type of computing device for the council members. The fact sheet you have has three different proposals on there. Those are quotes. One of them is for a Windows eight device, one is for a, an Android device, and one of them is for an iPad. Uh, you can see some comments on the bottom. There are an increasing number of cities, counties, organizations that are going to this. Basically, it would mean the end of hand-delivered packets by the police department, and you would receive the packet and all the attachments on the device. The device, if you want, I have a sample back there. You would be able to annotate the minutes. You could actually project them on the television up there if you wanted to. And the communities, there's a list of three, but I can give you more if you're interested, that have done it, have had favorable impressions. Of the three, they range from a low of six hundred and four to a high of nine hundred and ninety-six dollars per unit. I'm recommending the medium-priced one, the iPad, for ease of use, training, maintenance. And there would be a, some cost differences there because we would need to purchase less of those than if we purchased Android devices. Do you have any questions?
I have a few.
Shoot.
Thanks. So you're recommending iPad. Do I, well, can, can iPad talk to droids? So if I don't have Mac at home, is my iPad and my droid, like Google Calendar and, and iPads do not link?
No, they do.
Through a, through an app. They must do an app.
Uh, actually, the native email app.
Will link to Google Calendar and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay, my other question is, uh, in Finance, you mentioned the lifespan is eighteen to twenty-four months. Uh, not the lifespan, excuse me, the, the turnover, uh, the cost-
The payback, yes.
Cost payback. But I, I guess in my experience with, you know, computers, that's pretty much almost a lifespan. So I'm just, you know?
We found the lifespan of these. Tom Zulie has an iPad that's four years old now.
Devon's is five, isn't he?
Yeah. These have a three-year warranty, and basically during those three years, if something happens to it, it'll be replaced. So it has an at least a three-year lifespan.
Okay, so I have another question. Why iPad versus the lap, a laptop that could be, that could stay here? I mean, if we can link to everything at home, we can keep laptops here. They're three hundred dollars apiece versus seven hundred and seventy apiece.
And I had looked at some of the, the cheaper laptops. There are some reasons. Most of the laptops you'll see at Best Buy or at other places for very low prices, run Windows Home.
We're at Windows eight right now.
Windows eight, Windows eight Home. Windows eight Professional is required to network in our network here. So a Windows eight Home would need to be upgraded.
And how much is that?
Uh, it'd be about a hundred and twenty hours and about four to six hours of work.
Equates to, give me some, help me out there. I mean, is it, how much does it cost for, for the software to be upgraded?
If we, we would have to buy Windows eight Professional, and a hundred and twenty dollars is, is a ballpark figure. We have not gone to Windows eight in the city and don't intend to in the short term. The, it's designed mainly for touch devices, and there are some issues with that. So a laptop, if we purchased pretty much the bottom-line laptop with Windows Professional, Windows eight Professional, would be about four hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
The other things included in here, we would purchase the extended warranty on it for the second and third year. Part of the purpose, though, is to let people keep them at home. So on Friday, when we send out the packets, they will come directly to your device, your pad device, your-
But can't they come directly to our home computers? Can't that be set up through our email?
Yes, they can. If everybody has a home computer that can do that, they could.
Kind of what I was getting at before. I mean, I don't know. It seems like we have all that capability now and yet.
But is the, you know, that's fine. Is the council then, you understand, what we're trying to do is reduce some of the printing, too.
Right.
Well, it's, there's two parts.
If the council had it all at home, then we would, we would stop sending packets.
But we'd still need to print it to have it here.
Well, that would be up to you, correct?
If you needed it, you'd print it.
You can bring your laptop or, or the seven hundred and seventy-dollar iPad with, that's with a keyboard and everything, like, we need a keyboard for this?
That's with, that's with, that's with a keyboard, a stylus, a screen protector, a three-year warranty, carrying case.
I mean, I would knock out the keyboard right there. Who needs a keyboard? How's with a keyboard on it?
And some people don't use them. If you use them a lot, if you're taking notes on there or typing on there, and, and you wouldn't have to have a keyboard. That's the price on all three of them, including keyboards.
So is the system set up so if we get our packets on these, on the iPads, that we can actually take notes directly on iPads, too? I mean-
Yes. Yes, so if you pull up the agenda, you can take notes right on there, just as you would on a piece of paper.
And we'd have a printer in here to print.
If you wanted to print out a copy of something, I'd put a printer in the corner.
Any other questions?
Well, to me, it comes down to the preparation. Here it says to prepare a packet. For our common accounts, it takes an average of eight-plus hours to prepare thirteen packets. You know, I'm flexible. I, I can use virtually any device, known to man. But to me, it comes down to whoever's preparing this information and whatever time they're gonna save, and whatever device and software it's coming out to be. I mean, I, to me, that's kind of the, the meat of the, the effort. Whatever I use is, to me, is-
There will be a change forthcoming with the new website. That'll be the first step of the change because we're, it's gonna be done more automated now than it is the way it's done now with the constant change on the Word document, but.
We would need more than just a council and mayor, though, right? Our city attorney would have to have one and-
Yes, I, I, if we had the six council members, the city attorney, the mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and I would recommend the finance director also have one.
Is there special software that runs on the iPad? Is this like a whole application that?
No, what we would do is, uh, there are several PDF readers that would basically allow you to open those PDFs, take notes on them, print them out, do what you want. You would have your email on there, you'd have the city, uh,
Ordinances?
Ordinances on there. Um, you would have Facebook on there. That's where the, the videos for this are on. I would put on, uh, or pardon me, YouTube. I'd put on Facebook and Twitter because we have accounts if you want to use those, if you don't. But we will have accounts by next week on both of those. So it's a, the, the one in back, I can pass it around later. The software that's on there would be the software I'd recommend.
And I assume this can be done for all of our meetings, then, not just council?
Yes.
All of our committees and?
But then you have people that are in the, like, park board and, you know?
It would, it would be the, well, I guess, the intent would be the council and the council committees.
Yeah. Well, well, so the council committees, you mean like, like Finance Committee?
Finance, Public Works and Public Safety.
So, so we have software that's gonna need to be upgraded. Even if this lasts four years, the software is not gonna last four years. We're gonna upgrade that software.
Yes and no. The upgrades are free once you've bought the software, if you buy it, or many of them are free. So I've had one for, for almost four years, and I've never paid for an upgrade.
To me, this is just a natural progression to the twenty-first century, and it's time for us to get on board with this. And I'm in favor of it, so I will move that we approve the iPad four for seven hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-seven cents at eleven of them, I think.
Pending.
Pending financial, or where you would find the finances for it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Why not the Galaxy?
The Samsung?
Yeah.
The learning curve is greater for the users. The maintenance is more for IT.
We'd have to buy two more so that IT-
Uh, we don't currently have any of those. So if we're gonna maintain them, we would need to have a maintenance-
There's a greater learning curve?
Pardon?
There's a greater learning curve? Really?
Yes.
He's looking, she, he's looking at us. That's what he was doing.
I mean, I, who would, meet under forty, I'm good?
I, I can tell you, I have a droid and I have an iPhone, and there's a difference.
I know, I have droids. I can't stand, and my kids have iPhones. I can't.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna have personal, I mean, personal preferences.
Well, that's just it is.
It's like Mac versus PC. There's people that-
Right, well, it is Mac.
How soon will we be using these once this goes through? I mean, is it soon?
If it goes through, yeah.
Assuming that it goes.
Well, we would bring back a-
Recommendation for the twentieth.
Try to find a source of funds next meeting and then-
The, the agendas and all of that, when the new website comes in, we will be able to do that. It'll probably take a couple of weeks of learning curve to get them right. But, uh, but next week, we would be able to do electronic packets for actually all committees. But we wouldn't have iPads for all of them.
Can we strike out the keyboard? We'd need a keyboard.
I, I would say you would want to at least make that an option because I use my keyboard all the time. It depends on your dexterity on the, on the thing. I mean, that would be individual call.
Well, you can manage your council email on that. Is that right?
I have a funny feeling my fine motor skills are worse than everybody else's.
Well, that's why I have the keyboard.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Do we eliminate the paper on these chairs out here for every meeting?
It would be my recommendation that those will be reduced. I've been trying to get them reduced. That we have a half dozen available unless we know we have some topic and we can post them on the doors around.
If you have a printer here and need to print an extra-
Yes. If we need additional copies, we could run back and make copies, but we've, we've had that discussion already.
Okay. That's a lot of paper.
The reason, I guess, I struggle with this is not because I'm afraid of using one, but, um, we're gonna be replacing them every several years. And so we're just building a cost into future budgets and-
I agree.
It's a, you know, if you really stop and look at it, someone's still gonna be doing some work. You know, some of the work that maybe Jan does now is gonna be transferred to, I don't know, it's gonna end up in IT or-
It'll be down on the website.
There's gonna be work involved. It's not all gonna go away. And it's, it's a lot of paper. And you could buy a lot of paper for one work.
Well, IT will have to handle all of the, so, let me ask you this honest question. Do you feel stretched as it is without having more things to handle as far as the police department needing you and, and?
Uh, we're stretched. Um, this, we would have no involvement in the agendas.
But just to keep the product itself, we have a problem if there's something wrong with it, if there's a glitch or?
There would be some time involved, yes. That's one of the main reasons I recommended the iPad versus the Android because it's a-
Yeah, it's less, yeah.
There's a local repair dealer in town for the iPads.
Devon, what do you see as the biggest benefit of doing this? Is it when agendas change?
Well, change of agendas, preparation time, um, paper. I mean, I, I don't know what the paper cost would be. I can't give you anything, but it's, right now, it's changed, and then it changes, and then it changes, and then, you know, we're redoing agendas and redoing agendas as opposed to just a one-shot deal. It goes out and, but we, as I said, we brought it forward because there was some interest in it and, you know?
The, the way the process works now is people send their agendas to Jan, and if they send them electronically, she still has to print them and make thirteen copies of them. And with the website, agendas will come to her electronically, so Denny would send his electronically. It's not printed. She would drag and drop into the agenda.
There's, there's an approval process, so-
Yeah.
They would come to me, and then, and I would consult with the mayor and then-
But most of these things would never be printed.
So I assume there'll be a group training that will be offered for the website use and doing all that for, for all the support staff?
Uh, we, yes, we've al- we've already had, uh, we've had eight people trained for a full week.
But I think she's talking on the user side of it.
On the user side?
Using the iPad and-
No, I, no.
On the agendas?
That means support staff and everything to make sure that we-
Already had the training.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not real good at it yet, but we've had the training.
And Mike, if I understand you, so there's a twenty-four-month payback on this?
Uh, most of the cities that have done it have had between eighteen and twenty-four months payback, and what they figured is the paper costs, the time of one person spending eight-plus hours, the time and gas of the police officers delivering the packets. And so-
Obviously, the eight hours is dependent on the agenda. I mean, obviously, we've had agendas that are shortened.
So one more question then. So let's say, well, first, I don't mind the police officers delivering the packets because that means they're in the neighborhoods and stuff, so I'm okay with that. But the, um, one more question. So let's say Rich's iPad breaks down. We have a replacement for him that week, or how, what happens there? And if, if we have to get a new one, are we gonna be able, is the software gonna be more advanced than everybody else's? Is not, or is it not gonna be the same platform? How does that?
So far, the platform has remained the same. The, the first device that came out to number four, it runs the same platform, or the same software. So when it's upgraded, the operating system, they have upgraded it for current machines and new machines. So if one of them broke, um-
There'd be, I mean, Neil, I, Nancy, someone could certainly-
Yeah.
But that's not my point. My point is that if one of them breaks, we're down one and we're buying another one or a warranty.
Well, we have a warranty on it, so we can go get a new one.
It's got a warranty.
Well, yeah, the warranty ones, um, if we take it in to the local dealer, um, we would have a new one within about three days. If we take it to an Apple Store, they will give you a new one while you're waiting.
Okay.
Much, much of the software now is web or, you know, server-based, so it's not really, as you know.
But it's the software that updates and are, you know, if they do change their platform, then we're in a situation where we have to, do we, let's say they do hypothetically. Are we in a situation where we have to replace all eleven, or we can still operate with one being different than the other ten?
If they, if they replace their operating system, for example, there's a new one coming out sometime this fall. So far, they have always made that compatible with previous devices. And so you'll get a notice, do you want to update your software? And you click yes, and it'll go through the update process.
My question's a hypothetical, though. Let's say they decide not to because it's happened. Then what?
If, if you have ten of them on one OS and one on another, there's no issue with that because the devices don't communicate with each other. They communicate through the web.
With the server, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one comment. I would really like it, I know we've talked about it in the past, but if we take this step forward and with the new city website, I really would like it if a lot more of our meeting agenda items were on the screen for people to see at home instead of us. There's a lot of times we're looking at maps, we're looking at, you know, Excel spreadsheets with whatever, projects, numbers. I really, I'd like to find a way to have that information visible to people.
I mean, that makes a ton of sense, and I mean, we have my-
It's all electronic.
We have a laptop that we use it like for elections, and we could load the agenda on there.
Yeah, that could be done today. If you said, give up that TV to put the agendas on it, we could do that.
Or just, yeah, not in the agenda as much as-
We would just have to coordinate back and forth with the camera operator and say, could you please?
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
We'll bring back the price then next time, or a source of the budget.
I don't have a pen, so I don't know.
Why don't we, uh, we'll get to the, we're gonna, if it's okay with you, I'll re, I'll jump down to the request of the Hudson Rotary Club and Freestyle Yogurt for downtown benches. I'm new business. Mr. Darnold?
In March, Mr. Dick Wickham and Jim Luger approached Tom Zulie and myself about the possibility of Rotary sponsoring some benches in the downtown area. Also, about a week before that, Freestyle Yogurt, David Brantner, also approached city staff in regards to placing benches on the north side of their building, which is the south side of Locust Street, just west of Second. Tom and I went out, did the field measurements, so forth. The benches, um, in some cases, the one at the Chamber of Commerce would be on private property, not on the side, the official sidewalk area itself or the right-of-way. And Tom and I believe that these benches can be placed in the downtown area as long as there's a five-foot separation from the bench to either a light post, a tree, a, a meter post, so that it's five foot of accessibility for pedestrians to move through there, and most particularly, a person in a wheelchair. So from that standpoint, Tom and I are not opposed, and our issue that came up was, could benches be placed parallel to the curb? Set back from the curb about a foot and a half or so, Tom and I, we just, I think we're asking for trouble. One, proximity to cars that would be approaching. Uh, the second is snow removal during the wintertime where our city crews are trying to get the snow pushed off into the curbs or, you know, overnight so we can pick up the snow. So with that, we are recommending approval of locations. Now, these are the type of bench that is located at the intersection of Walnut Street and First Street, just across the street from the arch. Now, these are the type of bench that is located at the intersection of Walnut Street and First Street, just across the street from the arch. It's the blue Rotary sign in, in particular with the Rotary, excuse me. It'd be blue, six foot long. Again, all the sites would have to meet the criteria Tom and I were talking about. Five feet from, from trees, benches, meters, any type of harp, hard consideration. There is one exception, and that was in front of Dilly Dally, which is located just east of the alleyway that goes just west of City Hall, north, northerly to the west of City Hall. And there's no parking area there, so it could be possibility of putting a bench closer to the curb there. But then you wouldn't have cars that'd be approaching that bench. So Mr. Jim Lutiger and Dick Wickham are here from Rotary. Tom is here. The number of benches that were proposed by Rotary was approximately four or five. The locations would be, there's three, and there's three businesses on the south side of Locust Street, Dilly Dally, Eon, and Kenoke's Chocolates, maybe one or two there. The Chamber, Chamber Commerce, again, that bench would be put back against the building actually on the private property. The third location is San Pedro Cafe on the east side of Second Street, south of Walnut. And third would be Barker's Bar and Grill. With Freestyle Yogurt at 529 Second Street would be on the north side again. Any benches put there again would have to meet this criteria of five-foot separation and so forth.
He's already got one in there, Denny, and he doesn't have the five-foot.
Yeah, we weren't going to ask him to pull it out. I think it's a good example. Somebody go by there and could see what was being proposed. So I, again, those are his private benches.
Sure.
The ones on the east side, east side of the building are on private property because it's, the right-of-way starts about three foot away from the building. The ones on the north side, the one on the north side, again, those would be red. But that meets his corporate, corporate motif or decor, so that's the reason he wants the red bench.
But he's, he's right up next to a light pole.
Well, again, we go back there and say, Dave, you know, here's the criteria approved by the, if it's approved by the common council, you have to maintain this criteria. Otherwise, you can't have the bench there.
Okay.
Couple thoughts.
Yes.
I like the idea of more benches downtown. I think they're definitely needed. I'd like to see it more, I mean, and I appreciate that there's some businesses that maybe are more inclined to need them because they're restaurants or, you know, ice cream shops. I'd like to ma, to make sure that as a city, we're sort of deciding to some extent where they go and not just because a business asks for one because that's going to be hard, it's going to be hard to meet every request for a bench, I guess, is my point. So I'd just like to make sure we're not, you know, congregating them, you know, in one part of a block and then there's nothing for. I want the city to have a plan, I guess, so that they're dispersed somewhat. My second thought though, and I talked with Mr. Lutiger and Mr. Wickham about this before the meeting. I really appreciate the Rotary's generosity in doing this and I think it's a great idea. I wonder if we could go with, with the more uniform-style bench that maybe doesn't say Rotary, but has a plaque on it so that if other nonprofits want to make donations of this sort, they could use this particular bench as a model. You know, we could spec it out and, and there's a spot on, on the bench for a plaque. If we could do something like that so they're more uniform. And they seemed open to that idea. But I'd just be curious what other people think about that.
I have a problem with that.
Who, who's to assume the liability on these? The city?
I assume the city, they're on the, they're on the right-of-way, correct.
Yeah, city property, city work.
And, and kind of in relation to Lori's question, it's on your process sheet, Dick or Jim. You say, once we determine the business, that's the Rotary Club or is it the city? It kind of germane to Lori's question. I guess there's nothing.
I guess the question is, you know, I guess the question is, beyond these four or five that have been proposed, would you want them to come back and be re-approved for any new ones?
Well, that's what it says, isn't it?
Subsequently.
Right.
It says it comes to city council for approval, so, I mean, that's what I'm reading.
What's the determining factor?
Well, Tom and I are suggesting it maintains five feet from meters, light posts, or trees. So you have a five-foot clearance for pedestrians to get through there on the sidewalk. Some areas, it's, it's not an issue, like the chamber is on the east side of Second Street. It's like a 12-foot wide sidewalk. It's just not an issue. Some of those buildings are set back two foot from the property line. So those benches are, any benches on those buildings now are currently on private property.
Is there any consideration to expand this to the Hill businesses?
You know, most likely if they're going to, if they're going to, they're going to have benches go back on the, you know, 50, 60 feet back off the street right-of-way. I mean, you're not likely to see them on the street right-of-way unless we want to incorporate, you know, along the pathways, putting benches. And then maybe the city just wants to consider doing that on their own with, with some financial support by the businesses.
I guess I only ask just to understand the, the total breadth of the program.
Well, I guess it may evolve into that in some future, but that's, that hasn't been discussed with us at this point.
This program is 1,500 a year for five years with the businesses paying half the cost or if they have two partners on a bench for a quarter of the cost. So it's, businesses are partnering with Rotary to have these paid for, obviously. So that's the, these four businesses have made a commitment to have a bench and.
If it's approved.
If it's approved.
Well, if Mr. Wickham and Mr. Lutiger are okay with Lori's suggestion of plaques, then I'll make a motion to approve that and change the Rotary logo to using plaques. More unified-type bench, more.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Can they do that? You guys.
Yep, come on up, Richard.
I'm Dick Wickham, 1706 Laurel Avenue, and representing the Hudson Daybreak Rotary. And we had a member several years ago that suggested that there may be a need for some benches downtown. And our board this last year, or a few months ago, approved providing for two benches a year for five years or $1,500 a year for benches unless we got some businesses that would like to partner with us and pay part of the cost and what you said, Mr. Hoggart. And we were able to get several businesses this year. So we have four benches that are being, wanting to be put in. Plus, the Noon Rotary Club has wanted to put one, a bench up at Prospect Park. And when we talked with Mr. Zulie, he seemed to think that they might be able to find a place to put a bench in Prospect, so. And keeping with the consistency of the benches that we've put in Lakefront over the, over the years, along with the volleyball courts, different locations, for the good of the youth primarily, but a lot of citizens. We just thought that the bench project was a good, good project. And we would certainly be willing to, to look at whatever we can do to facilitate that happening within the city of Hudson. So the question you had was.
Style or?
Yeah, the, the people that make the benches used to be a Wisconsin company. They've moved across the river now up by Forest Lake. Accenture and, is that right, Jim? Accenture, I think is the name of the company. And they make a bench that's just a plain bench like the, the one that you see down by the Rotary Clock there across from the, the arch. You can have that plain bench. You can have it with a monogram on it like the Rotary ones are already. And we wanted to be consistent with that, plus a plaque, the Rotary plaque, and then a plaque for anybody that wanted to sponsor with us. So that, that style is available so that if you had another organization that wanted to have a bench that they donate, they could go to the company and have them do the same thing for the same price, so.
So you're saying you would have the Rotary emblem on the one side? That's what, at least this is what, that's what this is showing.
Right.
Would have the monogram on, in the middle at Rotary.
He wants to leave the Rotary in the middle.
Oh, and then have the, because it's black on the right.
Plaque and the plaque on one side and.
Oh, and I guess what I was asking for is, can we not have it say Rotary? And I thought this was what we had talked about. Maybe you guys misunderstood me. Can it just be a plain back and then there's room for a plaque?
Well, the Rotary logo's already on the left side, so you would know it's Rotary, I guess.
Right, and I guess what I'm saying, can it not say across the whole bench Rotary? Can there just be a generic background, but there's room for a plaque?
I think we probably would have to go back to the board and see if they wanted to do that.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood you guys.
We were just looking for consistency with the, the benches that we've already placed for the city.
There's already benches out there that say Rotary. Yes, you're right. So, sorry Lori.
In the park and down on, on First Street.
Sorry Lori, I would like to amend my motion to, to go with the picture shown.
Okay.
Is there a second or, well, you seconded.
Yeah, I won't second that. I, I don't want our downtown to turn into Rotaryville. As much as I appreciate the benches, I think there's a way to do it in a, a slightly more subdued way that acknowledges the donation without, you know, up and down the block saying Rotary.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, then it dies for lack of a second.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, then it didn't die.
So are there benches or are there not benches that could be made that don't say Rotary?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
They are, or, I thought I explained it. It must not have. The company that makes them will make them with Rotary or without or with any other name of an organization that wanted to.
You could put the Lions Club if you wanted to.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm getting.
Lions Club or the Optimists or.
Whatever.
The Bridge for Youth or whatever.
So that's my point, is that if we want more people to donate them in the future, to start out with a slightly more generic bench and let people put their own plaques on instead of.
Isn't that, but that's what this would be. You'd add the plaque of who donated, with, I assume that they would donate in, in, with Rotary. You guys, it'd probably be a joint, more than likely a joint effort, possibly not, but.
They could.
I would like this to see, I'd like to see it as a project that the city takes on, partners with Rotary, but that we do it to a, to what the city's looking for. And, you know, I don't think if the Lions Club wants to make a donation in the future, they should have to put their plaque on a Rotary bench.
No, it wouldn't be if it was a.
He's saying is it could say Lions Club where it says Rotary.
Right, or Optimist or Bridge for Learning or whatever you want to call it.
Whoever wanted to.
To pay for it.
They'd have a, a bench made like that, right?
Correct.
If I, now I'm thinking about the benches, it kind of blends in. It's not like it's just big old, like, you see it from a distance. It says, you have to kind of.
There, there is another one that we could have a bright yellow.
No, no, we don't want to do that.
Well, some cities have green. It wouldn't say Rotary. They would just have a plaque. I mean, we could, I know Lori's saying, you know, you go to some cities and they have contoured wood benches and they just have a plaque on it that doesn't have a, the insignia or monogram over the entire bench. It's a little more subtle, I guess, is what we're talking about.
You know, we don't have.
This does have the logo on it anyway, so.
Right. You know, when we buy new trashcans for downtown, we're not going to have different ones say different things and be different colors. They're going to be uniform. I think if we're trying to kind of overhaul, you know, some aspects of the downtown, it makes sense to be. I think the city should, we should, we should be deciding what we want the downtown to look like. And, and it's, it's no disrespect whatsoever to the Rotary, but to make it more amenable to other groups coming forward and making donations. I think if we start with a simple bench, room for a plaque, I think it opens up the likelihood future groups will do it. Just a, just a thought.
All right, because Rotary can only afford so many benches, so, I mean, you know, it kind of would open the door for.
Jim, you have something you'd like to say?
Jim Lutiger at 1711 Motel here in Hudson. And I have to get approval, obviously, from the Rotary mucktrunks, our president of the club. But I think that we could order those benches without the Rotary embossed in the back and have just the emblem saying Rotary, something that could possibly be removed at later date if necessary. If you could standardize for everybody on that with the blue color, I think, you know, that would be our preference.
Okay?
We would need to go back to our board because they've approved what you see before you.
Right, right. And just because Park Board hasn't seen it, you know, Public Works hasn't seen it. We haven't really had a chance to discuss the design or anything.
How about I do this? My motion, I'd like to keep my motion as is, but make it, but make it a change that we would go with the plaque design as being discussed here contingent upon approval of your board of the Rotary Club. And if it does not get approved, I'd still like to see the benches, so I'd like to keep, go back, keep this design then.
All right, we have one more.
How'd that come out?
Are you amending your motion?
I'm amending it with a contingency that the, I'm going to amend it by stating that the benches would have the plaque versus the Rotary emblem contingent upon approval of the Rotary Club.
The Rotary embossment.
Yes, yes. Yeah, whatever, yeah, exactly. Whatever we're calling that, whatever the 50 different definitions we've given it, yes. And then if Rotary didn't, does not want to do that and would like to keep this same bench as pictured, I would like that to be moved forward, so.
Okay, Randy, you had seconded the motion.
You're basically requesting the Rotary Club to take the Rotary thing off, but if they don't, you still want to go ahead.
Yes.
You're okay with that, Randy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trying to compromise here.
You know, I think there's time to do this the way we want it done. How long would you guys need to go back? I mean, could you get an answer?
I think their board meeting is Friday.
Okay, so we could get a, we could get an answer Friday potentially.
Yeah, I would personally rather hear the decision.
I would too.
Rather than throw a blanket motion out. I mean, it's your motion, so that's.
And we have a motion on the floor.
If the answer's no, that you guys can't, you know, they can't do it without the embossed letters, that's okay. Maybe we find a different place for those benches. And I just, I think the city should come up with what we want as a design, whether it's Park Board or Public Works or whomever. You know, some of you guys were here when we went through the memorial policy in the park. And while I wouldn't consider these memorials necessarily, there's guidelines for what we said we would put in our parks, whether it's benches, statues, what have you. I think we just need to be careful. We're not sort of, you know.
And there is another one coming, by the way.
There's another?
Just so you're.
Okay, an application for a statue, okay.
I just feel like we've already started with these benches.
We did in the parks. They're not in our downtown area.
Well, they're in Lakefront Park, right?
Yeah, but they're not in our downtown area.
Well, we approved the clock with two benches there with Rotary benches, so they are kind of in the downtown area already. We've approved those. That was what, two years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, several years ago.
No, it wasn't seven, was it?
Several, several, not seven.
Didn't go that far. Holy cats.
You're right, and it was with the Rotary clock.
Yep.
Yeah.
And can you, I mean, I, I think that's fine. I think it was great. But I think when we're looking at benches that are going to go up and down Second Street and by our businesses, I think we can choose and should choose what we want.
Okay, so the ones that, that the Noon Club would want to put up in Prospect Park, would that be the same as those that are in Lakefront Park?
That would still have to come back to council, but.
I think we'd have to go to Park Board and make a recommendation to council. Where you want to put them and what kind you want to put in there, I would guess.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, the, so the question is that leave the, the way it sits right now, this project with the Rotary bench like this, with the Rotary. And if it, if they can come back and say they can take it out, then it will be approved without the Rotary name?
Yes, pretty much.
Is that?
Without the embossed.
Without the embossed.
But with the two plaques.
Yes.
Two plaques, yes.
Yes.
Okay, does everybody understand that and is clear on that? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, four to two. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, may I inter?
Yep.
Mr. Bratner's request to put benches on the north side of, there's no Rotary Club, there's no advertisement. Is that okay that he places those on the sidewalk?
Well, I, I think he's got to move them where they're at because it's, it's right up against.
That's understood, but.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's on the. I, I don't think it's on the agenda, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Is that on his property there?
No, it's on the sidewalk.
Can I ask one final question?
Sure.
Is there, because I'd like these two gentlemen to be able to go back to their Rotary group with an idea of what this council's looking for. Is the preference that it says Rotary on the back of the bench, or is it the preference that it not?
Not.
Not.
But I don't want to stop the project either, I think...
But I'd like to hear from everyone, so that they can go back to their board and say, it's generally the consensus of the council that it say Rotary or it not say Rotary?
You mean in the embossing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my preference would be without the embossment.
Okay.
Rich?
I'm, I'm okay with it saying the Rotary, only because I think we should support the Rotary, I think they do a great job in the city. I, I do think it would be just for this request, and if they want to continue to expand it, I, I think we'd have to look at that. I mean, I don't want thirty-two benches in downtown area with Rotary all over it, but for this particular request, I don't have a problem with it having Rotary on it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, go ahead.
Either or.
Okay, Mary?
I already said not.
Okay, and you're not, and Kurt?
I would prefer not.
Okay, does that give you a good indication? All right, let's get back to freestyle yogurt. Thoughts?
If, if the Rotary benches go in, they're going to go on the sidewalk.
Yep.
So why would we be treating Mr. Bratner any different than what we'd be treating Rotary Club?
Does it even...
So it gets, it goes back to the same thing that Lori's talking about, should every business be able to put a bi, a si, a bench out there, any color, any style that they want? And I, I'm just asking the question.
Well...
So now are we going to have a hundred and fifty benches down there?
It's going to be red.
Well, with every other color, whatever color you want? That good...
I risk my case.
It's on the city sidewalk? It's on the city sidewalk, yeah, well, I mean...
Well, I mean, that's the question that we need to answer, folks, I mean, if, if every...
How do we decipher?
Right?
No, I totally agree, and, you know, is it going to be the same, from the same company? Probably not, so, I mean, do we want eighty different benches that are all different colors?
Who cares?
Wait, no.
Oh, I do, I do.
I thought you would care too.
Well, I don't think they're going to be chintzy looking benches, I mean, they're going to be...
Well, how do you know?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know that.
Let's, let's go on good faith that they're going to be, might want to have a, a policy before more benches go in.
I think some design guideline would be a, a, it's just good form to have.
We might want to remember the dinghies.
I just, I just remind you, years ago when the streetlights, Decreté Streetlights went downtown, part of that program was to put Decreté benches downtown, and the common council said we can't afford it.
Yep.
I don't mind having a policy that gives, um, criteria, but I don't want to micromanage what a business does in front of their building if it's something that's going with their, you know, franchise.
Except if it's on our property, I think we have a right to say what we put there.
Yeah, I get that, but that's why we can put a cri, a, a criteria.
But there's sign ordinances, and there's, there's video ordnance, downtown is...
But they all have criterias.
We're trying to, you know, kind of maintain a look.
So you want them all the same type of material, you want them all the same...
Possible, yeah.
Same length, fine, but to say they all have to be blue...
Can I suggest that this, because, can I suggest it goes back to either...
Park Board or Public Works?
Public Works, for some person's consideration.
Yeah, it's not a park.
Public Works.
Public Works, because it is part of, we're looking at new trash cans for downtown, and we need to, you know...
This is just a freestyle situation, not Rotary, not Rotary, because Rotary passed, right? So we're talking about freestyles specifically?
We're talking about anybody that wants to put a, a, a bench out in front of their place.
Right, but outside of what we just approved with Rotary.
Right.
That's correct.
I have a problem with that.
Is that a motion to, to refer it back, or...
I think it needs to go somewhere for more discussion.
Okay.
What, what's being referred back, this request?
Freestyle.
Freestyle, and the, and the, to back to Public Works for our downtown.
It's not that we don't want them to have a bench, we figured maybe some bench guidelines would be handy, because we could have literally any kind of bench in any...
Guidelines, I'm okay with not.
That's what we're talking about.
They have to be...
What do you expect to get it out of Public Works?
Policy, or a recommendation.
I mean, two of the people voted no for the benches already, I mean, if that's fine, if it's a policy... No, let me add that I didn't, did not vote against the benches.
Right.
I voted against the motion that left it wide open, whether it's embossed or not. I'm sorry? You want to make policy in Public Works with this bench request for the yogurt shop? I, I am not against benches.
Okay, it's... Get our arms around it, and we can, I think we can get through this in Public Works very easily.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, in a second.
Okay.
How long, so...
So, the benches will come and fall.
To refer the freestyle bench back to the Public Works.
He, he has a bench in front that's on his property, and that, he can do that, I believe. Correct? It's his property.
Yeah, so...
We don't have an ordinance against it.
So that's, that's another thing I was trying to say, is so the ones that are on their private property can be any ding dong type of bench they want, so we're going to modify every other bench except for the ones that, okay, that's cool.
Correct.
We'll see what happens.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What are we voting on?
Referring it to Public Works.
Public Works.
Going to take a crack, get some guidelines.
Okay.
Um, consider city policy regarding items to be posted on the city website.
After the last meeting, we had discussed what would and wouldn't go on, and we thought we should have some guidelines of staff that were, what the council would like to see. As you know, I sent an original draft, and then sent an amended one after Catherine looked at it, so we're consistent, government versus not government, so this is kind of what we came up with, but we're looking for feedback if there's any...
I just had one question, Devin, did, were we talking about the website, the church and nonprofit fundraisers, was that for?
We were going to say not have them on.
Not on.
The only thing that would be on there as far as events would be things that you approve as a community event.
Okay, I had thought we had talked about churches and having a link to that or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
The difficulty is, is church is private, the same as a business is private, and that's the difficulty you run into.
I think you want to start small, I mean, this is a city website, start with the notion that it's really for city purposes, the links you're putting on there are just governmental entity links, local, school district.
Okay.
Um, the danger you run into is setting up, having it morph into a public forum where you can't control the content, or have limited ability to control the content, so it's a very new thing. I did collect some policies from other municipalities, other cities around the state on links, but I think especially since it's, and they're a little more open for the most part, I only have a few, but I think you want to start small, so you find out how much work it takes, and just, you get a feel for what you want to provide, you know, on the city website. I think starting with just city-related stuff is probably enough to start.
And we don't want to be in competition with anybody else for advertising or anything like that, it's not our role, I don't think.
Right.
I'll, excuse me, move to approve city policy regarding items to be posted on the city's website.
Okay, is there, okay?
And this can be amended, just add a council meeting, it's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, so...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, thank you, next item is addition member of the City of Hudson revolving loan committee, I'd like to nominate myself. Denny, do you want to, anything to say about, we have two members now, and it's really hard with two members.
Yeah, we currently have had, this was a three-member committee when it was first established, we lost one member, current members, Mr. Alan Omernick and Mrs. Barbara Butler, been on committee for a number of years, do an excellent job, but if one of them is out of town, we get an application, we can't have a quorum, can't have a meeting, so the three members gives us a little more flexibility. Alan's got a banking background, so also has interest in the going on to the city, so I think he'd be an excellent member.
Are you looking for approval?
Yes.
Self nominating.
No.
Looks like it's, might be a tough sell here.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
We should split, let them break the tie.
Can you do that?
I'll vote no. Okay, is there a second, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed?
They must know something I don't.
Yeah. Okay, we have two proclamations, and first one is the Police Week proclamation, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Hudson Police Department play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Hudson, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, the duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the public, the people, by safeguarding life, property, and by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting an innocent, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation, and whereas the Police Department of Hudson has grown to be a modern law enforcement agency, with unceasing, provides a vital public service. Therefore, I, Alan Birchall, call upon the citizens of Hudson, and all patriotic civil, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand thirteen has Police Week, and to be, commemorate the police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibility have rendered a dedicated service to the community. The second one is Municipal Clerks Week, Nancy, whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exit, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing body and agencies of government and other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community, and the Municipal Clerk continues to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the municipality, clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, country, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. I therefore, Alan Birchall, Mayor of the City of Hudson, do recognize the week of May fifth through the eleventh, two thousand thirteen has our Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to all of our certified municipal clerks, Nancy Corson, Corson, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Last, I have an appointment for our library board. We have a open term, or an open seat, which will start June, and I would like to recommend approval of Karen Holmeyer, she lives at eight, one thousand eight Colonial Drive, for a three-year term on the Hudson Library Board. Karen is the financial person for Resco, a, a company here in town, she's a CPA, and I think she'd be an excellent choice for our library.
You have a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any communication for future agenda items from any older person? City Attorney? City Administrator?
Um, Fire Chief Fry asked me to remind everybody that there is no burning of any yard rubbish leaves, any of that type of material in the city, at any time, in any